Mr. Beverly Rowe, please.
This is Denny.
Here.
This is Ellis.
Here.
This is Sessler.
Here.
This is Hilfertie.
Here.
This is Joan.
Here.
This is Powell.
Here.
Mr. Cissack.
Here.
Mr. Tinsley.
Here.
Mr. Arm.
Here. 2.01 is approval of minutes. Motion to approve the minutes of the meeting is September 22nd, 2021. Vow of ass.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.02 is invoice listing. Motion to approve the invoice listing for September through October of 2021.
So moved. Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.03 is the treasurer's report. Ms. Powell.
As of August 31st, 2021, Pendelco's balance was $59,365,113. During September 2021, local state federal revenues totaled $7,419,622. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $10,771,440. As of September 30th, 2021, Pendelco's current balance is $56,13,294. The motion is to approve the treasurer's report for September 2021. Do I have this motion?
So moved. Seth.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2.04 is budget transfer. Motion to approve the budget transfer report for October 2021. Vow of ass.
So moved. Just second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three on the next agenda is the student representatives' report to the board.
Well, hi, I'm Gianna Ellis, and I have my friend Sophia Esposito here with me this month. There's currently a lot going on in our school. For homecoming week, we do a Battle of the Classes where spirit days and pep rally games are opportunities for the classes to compete against each other. But this year, Battle of the Classes has become more of an all-year event, so we're currently running a can drive for the Camp Out for Hunger ending on Friday. Now that one coming is over, the school's in store for some more activities and fun resources organized by every class in the school. We also have four students from our Peer Buddy Program attend the Regional Youth Summit at Havford High School today. They learned about leadership, teamwork, and other characteristics. These skills are vital to have in our schools and thus are super important to be talked about. We're also currently having our seniors working on Variety Show, with show dates coming up in early to mid-November. Having older friends, I know that missing activities like the Variety Show due to COVID last year was really tough. I'm super excited to see it all come together this year, and I hope it works out. In other news, the band is also on a roll. Last competition they had great success while accompanied by the entire football team. We wish them luck in these early competitions and hope for success in the future. And finally, the volleyball team is currently in playoffs. After being moved to the 40 division last year, we were booted out first round, but we won our first round game versus Saturday yesterday, 3-1, and get to play Boyer Town tomorrow away at 7:00. It just so happened to be the team that knocked us out last year, so I hope by next month I'm able to bring you guys a positive update instead of it becoming like a touchy subject. Thank you all. Ms. Sophia.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sophia Esposito, and I am very glad to be speaking on behalf of Sun Valley High School tonight. To start things off, Sun Valley would like to acknowledge that the first marking period is coming to an end as of Friday, November 12th. Teachers and administrators suggest that parents kindly remind their children to keep up to date with their schoolwork because it is very important for students to have a great start to the year regarding their grades. Due to scheduled days of insert, students will not have school Monday, November 1st, and Tuesday, November 2nd of next week. It will be a nice break for the students of Pendelco and can be a great time to study for upcoming quizzes and tests. Speaking of Cess, 710 students took the PSATs on Wednesday, October 13th, which would roll them into the National Merit Scholarship Program. Qualifying for the scholarship can be very helpful when applying to colleges and universities and is a very important opportunity for Sun Valley students to be partaking in. An additional 10 students use the alternate day on Tuesday, October 26th, to take their test. 38 students also took the ASVAB exam this past week, not to mention 26 of them met the cut score of 31 or higher. What a wonderful couple weeks of testing for Sun Valley. Lastly, I will talk about our winter sports. Winter sports athletes are gearing up with open gyms and getting ready for their season to start on Friday, November 19th. Students are suggested to have their PIAA and Section 8 recertification forms filled out and handed into the athletic office by Monday, November 8th. That is all I have for you today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ladies. We appreciate having you back. You're welcome to stay or to go, whichever you prefer. But thank you for the report. Good luck tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Number four, DCIU report. Ms. Powell.
DCIU. So, just a couple things happening over there. Uh, DCIU is partnering with Springfield School District to offer COVID-19 vaccine clinics on November 2nd. Let's see. Booster first and second COVID-19 vaccines will be available. Student clinics will run from students ages five and older at Springfield High School. Clinic dates are first dose on November 11th, second dose on December 5th. Marple Education Playground is finished and being joyfully used by our preschool children and children with special needs at the Marple Facility. Delaware County Technical Schools held their Fall Occupational Advisory Committees. There were 225 professional advisory members, sorry. Sorry, it cut off. The panel presenting is District Attorney Jack Stolzstimer, Detective Sergeant Ken Bells, and Chief Deputy Attorney General on, oh, sorry. Something, I apologize. This is a different thing, but DCIU is running a program called Prioritizing Online Safety, which was happening today. So, my email unfortunately got cut off, but that's just a couple things happening over there.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Number four tonight, I'm sorry, number five is Dr. Steinall's student representative report.
Thank you, Ms. Steinall. I have a presentation I'm going to present from over here that won't matter when the presentation gets overlaid to the voice. It's just hard to see it off of the computer here. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out to the October meeting. I wanted to just start by congratulating so far our marching band in tremendous success. They've always been strong. You've always been tremendous. This year, they are particularly standing out, and I'm hearing about it from people who have seen the show. The participation numbers in marching bands around the country are becoming a little more minimal than they've been decades ago, but folks who see our show are just walking away kind of astounded and very, very proud. Everywhere they go, they are finishing in first place. So, we're very proud of the first-place finishes, and it's important to remember that. You know, I see the marching band students in August on the very hot weather, putting in the hours, and last Wednesday night before our board meeting, when I was leaving the parking lot to come over here at 7:15, they were still out under the lights, working on getting even better. So, I wanted to acknowledge those students at Sun Valley. Congratulations to our volleyball team heading to districts. Sun Valley took the first round in the playoffs last night. With the win, they will face Boyer Town away tomorrow. Congratulations to all of these terrific student athletes, including Gianna, who just did a great presentation for us as well, and the coaches that they have as well. So, we're really rooting hard for them, continue to advance, and it's a great group of girls as well. Last month, we officially launched Pendelco Podcast. You may have seen it on our website. That's available on Spotify or Apple Podcasts. It's going to be covering academic programs, arts, athletics, activities, pretty much straight A's, community interests, and staff and student highlights. We also have a Ready for Life podcast that's going to be geared for our education staff, where we will interview, I will interview our own teachers and ask them, how do they marry content standards with Ready for Life skills? How do you make life, how do you make education realistic and genuine for students? And how do you manage to get kids ready for tests and ready for life at the same time? So, we have those two podcasts. Very excited to expand our offerings in the social media space. Really impressed with what I saw yesterday. Those of you who have students at Norfolk Middle School may know that the One School One book was the book 11 by author Tom Rogers. And Tom zoomed in with all of our students yesterday. Lisa Palmrani put these notes down for me, and she said it was an extraordinary day at Norfolk yesterday, and that was the word that I thought was really well-chosen because this Zoom was just such a great experience for these students. Author, screenwriter, Tom Driver, they did not just zoom in for a little bit. Three hours he spent with our students at Norfolk Middle School. This was part of an effort for authors who have written books to introduce them to the realities of the stories in the book and actually their lives as well. Very impressed. I was amazed by the quality of the preparation of our students, of the questions that they asked about the writing process, about the content in the book, and obviously with the anniversary of the terrible tragedy of 9/11, that was perfect. One school, one book. And my understanding was Crispin Ventura was helpful in bringing this together. I earned a number of people as well. So, just a really, really good day at Norfolk. A lot of great things happening at that school, and yesterday I saw something that was relevant to students, but also really important terms of developing their writing skills. Will we start a test to stay in Pendelco within the next week and a half? We'll be sending out information to parents, making them aware that we heard our parents loud and clear in their concerns about students being subjected to very lengthy quarantines as a result of potentially being of close contact. What superintendents learned is that, I apologize for that, what superintendents have been saying for a year now is that we have all these students who have been identified as close contacts and having to stay out of school for upwards of two weeks periods, and then none of them very rarely, very, very rarely became positive cases. So, we understand that there's mitigation protocols we have to follow. School districts are concerned, however, that we've had too many students missing instruction. So, on the agenda tonight, we will be, I will be asking the board to approve a memorandum of standing with the Delaware County Intermediate Unit that was permitted to offer and oversee a test to stay program. Test to stay program requires parental permission. So, if a student or staff is asymptomatic and is identified as a close contact in our school, not at an outside party, not at a travel soccer team, but a close contact in our schools, then we can offer this option where they would be tested using the Binax Now Rapid Test, tested once every two to three days. As long as they get negative, as long as they are asymptomatic, they can stay in school, right? So, this cannot be used for people, again, that were deemed to be close contacts outside of school, but if it was in our school, we know that people are wearing masks, we know that people are generally socially distancing, and the memorandum agreement permits us to use the Binax Now to try to keep more kids in school while they're asymptomatic. On my call this week with superintendents, another superintendent of county, they'd already started this, they had a board meeting earlier in the month, and he said test to stay has been terrific, godsend for our students. It has dropped the number of students in quarantine dramatically. So, more information will be heading out to our staff and our students and our teachers and our parents next week. Snow days are flexible instruction, so it feels like it's been so warm this fall, it's hard to think about cold weather, but does feel like we turned a corner on that this week a little bit. Before you know it, we will be into the winter months. Want to review where we stand with flexible instruction. So, parents have this kind of feeling that when now that we have Chromebooks, there's no more snow days. Not correct in this district, right? So, we still may have snow days, but it doesn't mean that we have to make up days at the end of the year. So, we have been approved by PDE to offer up to five virtual flexible instruction days, which would limit potential makeup days at the end of the school year. So, all of us might remember when we were younger, if you had eight snow days, you had to make up four, and you're like, oh, I have to give up either spring break, or, oh, we have to go to school longer in September, longer in June. We now have the ability to get away from that challenge. How does it work? Once we would exhaust our normal inclement weather snow days, at that point, we can begin to utilize virtual remote learning days. Those days will generally follow the virtual Wednesday schedules that we used successfully last year. We don't want students on a computer for six and a half hours, particularly when, or younger ones, when they're looking outside and they're seeing, you know, six inches of snow and everybody's sledding and having a good time. We don't need kids on a computer for six and a half hours. We knew that the virtual Wednesday schedules were a nice happy mix, right? Between asynchronous work, that students can work on their own in the afternoon without the necessary assistance of parents, and the instruction that they would get in the AM hours. Sun Valley Norfolk students would begin live streaming at 8:00 AM. Why not give our Norfolk students, our Sun Valley students an extra half hour of sleep? Not a bad thing. Elementary schools would start at 9:00 AM, and the PM hours will be asynchronous assignments. I had a question about would we still have delayed opening schedules? Yes, we will. So, we still may have to utilize delayed opening where we know that the morning might require an extra hour or two of preparation before we opened up school. I don't want to lose in-person instruction. When we can get it, a delayed opening with in-person instruction, I still believe is still better than a district-wide virtual learning day. More information will be sent out to parents on those issues next two weeks as well. Want to point out Cross Country Program. You don't hear a lot about Cross Country in the past, but at Sun Valley and Norfolk, what I've seen this season is very, very noteworthy, very positive growth, particularly at Sun Valley. All the boys and girls that were on the team throughout the season were experiencing personal records. We have Coach Sherrill and Coach Huber doing a tremendous, tremendous job. I believe, keep an eye on this, I believe that in Pendelco, Cross Country will become a strength in coming years, thanks to the interest of the students, the commitment, and the wonderful new coaches that we have. Want to point out our Act One Index. We talked a little bit last week about this. Pennsylvania base index for next year is 3.4%. Our adjusted index is 4.1%. So, the Act One Index, again, is the maximum that a school board can increase property taxes by unless they see an exception. We have not historically sought an exception to exceed that number. The point I want to make, though, is despite the fact that our adjusted index is usually higher than the statewide index, our total revenue trends are continuing to fall behind peer districts, and I'll show you what that looks like over time. You'll see here a blue line, which represents our per-student revenue in Pendelco. They take our total revenue divided by the number of students. That's our per-student revenue. The green line represents all of the school districts in Delaware County. So, you'll see way back in 2008, here we go. Our revenue was about 9% below average revenue of all the other districts in the county. And over time, as districts have been increasing their base by the Act One Index, we have now gotten to 2020, where we have most recent data, we're now 18% below the average revenue of other districts in Delaware County. So, an average district in Delaware County yields about $22,000 in revenue per student. Pendelco has 18,672. So, that's, again, about an 18% decrease, and what's happening is the compounding effect of our base budget is limiting us. So, a district that has an $80 million budget and gets a 3.4% increase will certainly grow the revenue more than Pendelco that has a $65 million base budget and can only increase by 3.4%. So, I point this out to the board to understand how important it is for us to at least maintain revenue increases consistent with the Act One Index. I hear from residents, fair question. Why do you have to raise taxes at all? We're paying all this money in taxes. Why are you raising our taxes at all? And this is why. If we want to offer the same programs that are competitive with the rest of the county, as the rest of the county is increasing revenue, we have to make sure that we're doing the same. You may have a question here, what is this spike? The spike was when we received large chunks of reimbursement for prior construction work related to plant time. So, that spiked our revenue when we received it during that period. But if you look over time, you'll see we went from this number right up to about 18,672. So, we're trying to stay pace, and I appreciate the board's support in helping us do that, but I wanted to point out the challenges that we have with only raising taxes by as much as the Act One Index. Folks say, where do you spend all that money, right? Well, limited revenue means that we have to manage our district with the lowest total expenditures in Delaware County. No district spends less than Pendelco to operate its school district. If we were the smallest school district, that might make sense, but we are not the smallest school district in Delaware County, right? But we are the leanest because of the challenges that we have with our revenue. But I think it's hats off to our staff and our parents and our students that our achievement is above the county average, but the amount of money that we spend for a student is significantly below county average. We're going to be asking the board to approve residency reverification again. This year, we will ask those families whose last names begin with S through Z to re-verify, as well as people who have most occupancy, 13 or two guardians, or those that are in rental and leased properties. We want to thank residency office for managing that, and this method of utilizing last names changes on an annual basis. Now, it's time for S through Z. Those letters will be going out in the month of November, and we'll continue to give nearly a two-month period for people to comply with reverification. They can send information online to help them walk through the process. Looking ahead, girls mentioned a couple of things. Conferences coming up, in-service days, American Education Week. We'll have a school board meeting also on November 10th and 17th, and it's certainly a well-deserved Thanksgiving break for everybody. So, thank you for the time this evening for our superintendents.
Thank you, Dr. Steinall. I'm supporting information tonight. The board met executive session to discuss personnel and relegation matters. Comments by members of the board? Comments by members of the public? It was only to agenda items only. Mentioned board review starts on page two, goes on three, four, five, and six, and concludes on page seven. References to Pendelco Budget 2020, 2021, Act 93 Plan, PDEA Agreement, PDESA Agreement, PDSSPA Agreement, and PA School Code Section 1108B. His administrative recommendation will approve all personnel items asked for. Vow of ass.
So, second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Tonight, we're going to pull 9.03 off of the agenda. We will vote on that at the November 10th meeting, reason being, Delphicons failed to run the posting as required by law, and we will have plenty of time. It will not cost the district any money, but to be compliant, we will vote on that at the special meeting of November 10th. So, we're going to go consent agenda from 9.04 through 9.14. Does any school member wish to pull any agenda item to be voted on specifically? With that, the motion to approve 9.04 through 9.14. Please note, all contracts and preparation and solicitation bids are subject to the solicitor's review. Vow of ass. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Comments by members of the public?
Good evening. My name is Amy Cusen. I live at 2160 Armor Lane in Aston. I've tried very hard to word my comments respectfully and within the guidelines for public comment, so please forgive me if it comes out awkwardly tonight. I am here with a question in reference to Board Policy 00.004 Membership, specifically the section regarding removal of board directors. It specifies that, quote, "If a school director shall neglect or refuse to attend two successive regular meetings of the board unless detained by sickness or prevented by necessary absence from the district, or if in attendance at any meeting they shall neglect or refuse to act in an official capacity as a school director, the remaining members of the board may declare such office vacant on the affirmative vote of a majority of the remaining members of the board." That's the end of the quote. If that vacancy occurs during the last two years of that person's term, a individual can be appointed to fill that vacancy for the remainder of the term. Given that at least one measure during the past year has failed to pass due to a 4-4 tie.
That's nothing. You address, what was it, Whisker addressed the question?
I appreciate that.
You can turn the microphone over there.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've had this experience in a number of other districts where I have been at a time where I have had the good fortune to represent them with regard to the status of an elected board member. And to sum it up fairly quickly, judges are not eager to overturn the will of the people with regard to an election, especially with regard to elected officials. My understanding of this situation is that, is that a member on this board who has been absent has had unidentified significant medical issues throughout the year, and that she communicated before each meeting with the, each public meeting, with either the board president, the superintendent, and indicated she was unable to attend. I would, I would render the opinion to this board if I were asked the question, which I have not been, but if I were asked that question, my answer would be that that excuse is sufficient and would not result in that. I, I understand the question, and there were a fair amounts of mays, and that shaw's in there, and as often takes place in this, in this wonderful book, that everybody laughed at me, they laugh at me generally when I carry it around, as I indicated to them, I'm tactile, and I don't like to necessarily research online. In here are, are the, are, is that statement or a law somewhere in there, and then a series of cases. So, each one of those things and those policies are subject to interpretation along those lines. Bottom line, that, that policy or the mirroring law in the school board says, if somebody misses two meetings, two people, someone can make a motion on the board and they vote to replace that person. I would submit to you that I don't believe that that has any chance of being upheld in a court of law. Judges are going to look to intent, judges are going to look to like circumstances, judges are going to look to status and outcome. So, in answer to your question, I would tell you that I don't believe that that would be the situation in this case, even if this board desired to take that action or made that motion. My advice would be, having had the experience in another district where an individual just with no communication stopped tech and supposedly even moved, and that part was unable to be verified, but even at that point, at the last minute, that individual obtained, the board took that vote, at the last minute, that individual obtained an attorney, and the district, I don't remember if the, I don't recall if the matter went to an actual decision, or the judge mentioned to the district and someone from my office that it just wasn't going to be granted, so withdraw the petition. I cannot recall what specifically occurred in that matter, as it has to be seven or eight years ago. But this has been a topic that gets confronted, it's a question that comes up often in a challenging way with board members who are divisive with one another in certain areas and attempt to utilize that rule. But the bottom line is judges are very, very, not just our judges, judges in general are very, very loathe to overturn an individual who's been elected to an office. Those are policies of the board. They don't necessarily mix and match well with election law, which is you get elected to this for this period of time, and here is your term. So, that is a general explanation of the matter without a specific identifying topic.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. Comments by members of the board?
There's another comment.
Sorry.
Hi, my name is Amy Wonders. I live at 135 Edward Lane in Aston, and I'm standing before you as not only a parent, but a member of the Aston AA Board. My question to you and my concern that I'm bringing up tonight is about the policies for allowing groups outside for allowing groups outside of our students into our facilities. And I just put in a request for our Aston AA cheerleaders to use one of our schools that they've been using for multiple years. I was told that the school district was not allowing outside groups into the facilities at that time. I took that no, and I went and I started looking elsewhere for our youth programs to hold their practices. In September, I reached back out to the facilities department with a question asking why. Why are you allowing a craft fair to take place at Sun Valley? But our youth programs are not allowed in schools, schools in which our students all attend, but a craft fair having outside people, outside vendors coming into our buildings? As far as sports go, I understand that some of our sports teams are wearing masks, not a problem. That was never an option before telling me no. You are okay with letting outsiders into our buildings, but our youth programs, which feed into your high school and your senior, and your middle school sports, are not allowed. Every year, I feel as though our programs are getting pushback from the district to use facilities. I understand that we are still navigating through a COVID situation where things are unknown from day to day, but I'm just asking for explanation as to who can and cannot attend coming to your facilities. Just last week, I tried to bring my son into school late and was told I was not allowed in the building. Okay? That's your policy, but again, the weekend before, you allow people in the building for craft fairs. I'm just trying to get some answers as to why there is pushback from the facilities department, from the district, and our youth program. We have a lot of youth sports that go through the Pendelco School District. We don't all fit at the community center. We need our schools in order to let these athletes grow. And I'm being told no over and over again. Thank you.
For the board and members who are here, and certainly Ms. Weathers, whenever our facilities are available, if they can be used by community groups, we let them be used by community groups. You alluded to COVID. Certainly, COVID requirements have changed our ability to operate the way that we had for many decades prior to that. Particularly going into this year, we had to make some decisions in the summertime not knowing what COVID would be like in the wintertime. So my understanding at this point in time is, community groups can apply for use of facilities if the facilities are available or permitting them to be used. In some sports, in some locations, what was available in the past is not available now because of the requirements that are causing us to change our setups in our cafeterias. Our cafeterias that are required to have spacing now, that'll recognize the social distancing that has to be in place for our kids during lunch, is affecting the facilities that we can use after hours because they're set up for maximum spacing each day. So my understanding is that has created some limitations. Some of the sports such as wrestling are impacting because right now, we have facilities at the high school that are not available, which then impacts the middle school, which could then impact our elementary school. So this year, I think, I know, is certainly unlike any of our prior years, and might explain why there has been some inconsistencies. But I would continue to encourage community groups to apply for use of our facilities, and if they're available, I anticipate that they will be approved. I will tell you that some of the individuals who are charged with processing those applications have had to kind of navigate the challenges that come with COVID. So is the district letting me approve this this year? We were told in the summertime that we couldn't do it, now we can. So we've been trying to take again on a case-by-case basis, ability to let life go on as normal as possible. Craft fair that you had asked about, we looked at that as a weekend activity, very, very important, Sun Valley PTL in terms of fundraising, did not impact our students. So if adults chose to go to this event on a weekend, that's their choice. It doesn't impact our kids because it was a weekend event outside of ours, and we thought that that was important enough to say yes to. So that's kind of example where we're not trying to discriminate against anybody, we're trying to be consistent, but we're also trying to let life get back to normal for as many groups as possible.
So, I'm sorry, I can go back up here. So you just made the statement that you felt that a craft fair was important enough to be had, but our youth programs and our students in Pendelco are not?
That's not what I said at all.
But you said that you felt that the craft fair was allowed, you had it because it was important enough.
Similar to PTL events that we are permitting, all sorts of events that we're permitting right now. What I've indicated is, if there are athletic events or community events and you would like use of our facilities, if our facilities are available and we can approve it in consistent and concert with our COVID mitigation requirements, we'll say yes. We were able to say yes to the event, the craft fair. I'm not going to get here into a position of saying, well, I approve of this one, I don't approve of that one. I think everybody knows, our facilities have consistently been available for community groups and will continue to be so as well. To follow up with that part of COVID, the board had asked that any time our facilities were denied to a local sports athletic group, that the board was notified and kind of looked into and made sure that there was significant reason. We are going to get back to that practice. We got away from it, COVID, nobody used our facilities for eighteen months. There's still maybe situations, as Dr. Steinle said, where they may not be available. If that's the case, there's nothing we can do about that. But if our facilities are available, they most certainly should be available to our athletic association.
Okay.
And Andrew?
With any to what Ms. Weathers says, I mean, it personally affects me as well as another board member too. So I'm not saying yes, I'm not saying no. What I'm saying is, quite frankly, potentially, I'm just thinking out loud as far as maybe what I could work with Mr. Dottie and yourself and see if someone wants. What proposal I'm just thinking of, and you don't have to say yes or no with this, as if we have to pay someone to move everything out of the, we'll say Northley Wrestling Room, for lack of better terms, Northley Wrestling Room, to make it to wrestling room, to make a back into the cafeteria by the end of the night. I'm just giving proposals to try to, outside the box, that two years ago, three years ago, this wouldn't have had a, wouldn't have been an option. I'm just thinking of ways that maybe we can say without, say no. And I'm not saying we don't have to make a decision now, I'm just trying to have this thing outside the box because that's all we're going to have to do this year.
Yeah, there's no question. Look, we've utilized our gyms, auditoriums, cafeterias, classrooms, outdoor fields for decades, right? I mean, in my fourteenth year, we, and Brian Dottie oversee facilities for, I think, ten of those fourteen years. And whenever we can utilize our facilities, we're happy, we're happy for people to use our facilities. We like to say yes, we're proud of the investments that we put in. COVID changed all that. COVID limited what we could do, and state oftentimes did not provide flowers. At times, the state said, we don't believe you should have groups of people indoors. That is, well, it's a local decision, right? Well, is it a local decision that parents don't want guests or outsiders in their kid's school? So, you know, we all know that COVID has put us in a position where temporarily life is different, right? And everybody's just trying to make the best decisions that they can to get through this. Hopefully, it goes away, and we get back to a position where if our facilities are available and we're not using them, happy to let people use them, happy to let people use them.
I would like to second Kevin's suggestion about possibly having facilities hire more people to make this happen because I was also, for youth basketball turned down, we normally used both Coburn and Parkside, but Coburn due to their gym floor and then Parkside due to the kids eating lunch, it's too much work for the custodians to remove the lunch tables, get them back and forth. So the Brookhaven Basketball Youth Program now is down two facilities, so we only have one, which is basically controlled by the Borough Council there. We're not as fortunate as Aston to actually have the run-of-the-mill with their gym, and they have four courts inside, four large courts. So it's very hard for us, so I understand what you're going through, and hopefully we can find a way to maneuver around this because I certainly agree. You know, I'm very supportive of the craft fair, but youth sports have to have some type of name and, you know, focus on, especially since the kids have, you know, waited long enough to be able to play again. So if possible, please, we can maybe hire some more people at night.
Well, we currently have vacancies for our own part-time custodians at night, so I'm not averse to hiring people. We still even have applicants for our existing district.
Would it be unfair to maybe ask if it's an outside, like the AA, you know, have the parent be responsible for that, or does that become a liability?
Well, we could have a legal liability, release the liability, I'm sure.
Just saying, like, just to help, hiring anywhere matters, it's Rite Aid, Chick-fil-A, the school, the hospitals, everybody's, everybody's going through it. So I mean, it's something we can obviously take off on and hire now, but that might be a possibility. If they want you to...
Mr. President, the board has, you know, has Policy Seven Oh Seven, which is use of facilities, as well as a detailed administrative regulation with regard to use of facilities. So all the conversations with regard to shifts of liability and things like that, you know, are always a topic and concerning, but I would advise you to make sure that you work through your existing policies, they're fairly detailed, and they cover those topics, and as at a next meeting or further discussion, may be able to work through those topics, but your policies are fairly detailed in this topic, reflecting what Mr. Armour had said about, you know, an emphasis placed by the district on the utilization of facilities. And you can just look through there and quite possibly come up with an answer, right?
I'm going to take the minute for the next steps. If I look at it, and I don't even know if it was the twenty-second or the fifteen or the fifteen, whenever you put to start the facilities, you know, probably, why don't we huddle up and try to see if we can come to compromise and try to figure it out? I can't remember exactly. I think from your organization, it's open whether it's the fifteen or the twenty-two to get started.
I know that the winter sports are effective like in nineteen.
Yeah.
So we would, you know, honor that. I mean, I understand that, you know, in the past, Northley's mats weren't out until then, so if that's a possibility, but my, I guess, just our sports happened, I was Northley going to have a wrestling team with, I know that the eating and the mezzanine, my kids went through it, I understand you have to separate them. But I was also told that that was not, they didn't know, the last communication I had is that they didn't even know if Northley was going to be able to have a team because of the lunch situation. Obviously, that would be a no for us being able to use that facility if the mats aren't even there for us.
Yeah, in that particular sport, it's a unique situation where we're not only navigating COVID, we're navigating issues at Northley, where they have lunch, and also our ability to host wrestling at Sun Valley, where we're currently undergoing renovations. So that particular sport is unique, we can talk offline. I did tech with Mr. Dottie after we got your email last week, indicated that we're still trying to figure out, you know, what spaces do we have to accommodate the group? So it's not that, like, no, we won't let you do it, which is that we have to find those places, and we don't quite have them yet. Ms. Jones pointed out, there are some issues, other issues. We have Coburn Gymnasial, we've been waiting because of supply chain backup to have that floor replaced. So there were times that we couldn't even approve that because at the time, we didn't even have knowledge whether or not we would have a gym available for winter sports. So it's been a unique year for purposes of this board, you know, I'll continue to work and facilities, pretend to work with Ms. Weathers, that we can try to address her questions, and I will put Policy Number Seven Oh Seven on the agenda for discussion at our next meeting as well. And I'll send that out to everyone, and if there's any items that you want to change, let us know, go through that process so that we can implement policies accordingly.
At the current time, we are planning to have a Northley wrestling season. We've got to find a place to make it happen, whether it's in Northley's gym or, you know, in the regular gym over there with the mats thrown on the floor, but we're going to do every, make every effort. Dr. Steinle said earlier, there hasn't been any talk about not having a Northley wrestling season.
I just want to personally and publicly thank this Pennsylvania School Board Association for their taking a stand against the National School Board Association of removing our membership from that group at this time. I'm very grateful they did that, and I just wanted to thank them publicly.
All right, next meeting, we have Wednesday, November tenth. That will be a voting meeting for purposes of the bond re-verification. That's seven thirty here at Service Center. And then November seventeenth is our business meeting, once again, here at Service Center. Vote for Gorman.
Seven.